Windcam can fix that.
Yeah, that's we can wait as well if that's necessary. We are still recording on our Zoom so. Fixed from Windcam, so we're good to go. Okay, so the motion carries so we'll reorganize so the town manager at this point is. Running the reorganization of the select board. Sorry with the barking dogs in the back, my fault.
So Amy's internet went out, so she's trying to get in now. So normally I would say we could jump into reorganization. There she is. Okay, let me just wait a second.
Sorry guys.
Great. Thank you, Amy. So I've been given permission to preside over this portion of the meeting. This is the select board reorganization to select the chair and vice chair. So I'm first going to open the floor for nominations for the chairmanship of the select board for the town of Winchester.
Yeah, I nominate Susan Verdickio for chair.
Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, I'm going to close the nomination. It's been, there's only one nomination and it's seconded. And since there's no further nominations, I'm going to close the nomination process and call for a vote. And I'm just going to call you as I see you on the screen. So please state the name of the person you are voting for. Mariano Golovoff?
For Ms. Verdickio.
Michael Bencourt?
Yeah, Susan, absolutely.
Susan Verdickio?
Yes.
Amy Shapiro?
I vote for Susan Verdickio.
And Richard Mucci?
I vote for Susan Verdickio.
Congratulations. I am now going to open the floor for nominations for the vice chairmanship of the select board for the town of Winchester.
I nominate Mariano Golovoff for vice chair, select board.
Second.
There has been one nomination and seconded. Any further nominations? Seeing none, I'm going to close the nomination process and call for a vote. Mariano Golovoff?
I'll vote for myself.
Goes to you first.
Name order. Mike, your next?
That was me. Yes, Mariano.
Susan Verdickio?
Mariano.
Amy Shapiro?
Mariano.
And Richard Mucci?
I vote for Mariano Golovoff.
Okay, congratulations. At this point, I will turn it over to Chairwoman Verdickio.
Thanks, Lisa. And thank you, Mike, for getting us through a very unpredictable and challenging year. Great job and. Also, congratulations for being reelected and I know you'll be a great help with the next three years. So, thank you.
Thanks, Susan.
So I guess the first thing we have is donations. Do we have a couple?
Oh, I guess that's me now. So I move that we accept the nations, the amount of $1,410 from Winchester Rotary Club, Eleanor and Frank Vazilla, Jasper and Kathleen Sorrow, Charles Colhane, William Wright, William Nash, and Barry and Brenda Donahue to the Winchester Public Safety Memorial with appreciation from the board and the town.
Is there a second?
Second.
I guess I have to take a roll call vote. So Amy?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And Rich?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. So it's unanimous.
I move that we accept donations in the amount of $295 for appreciation of services provided by the Council on Aging with appreciation from the board and the town.
Second.
Roll call a vote again. Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And Rich?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. So it's unanimous.
I move that we accept donations in the amount of $295 for appreciation of services provided by the Council on Aging with appreciation from the board and the town.
Second.
Roll call a vote again. Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And yes for me. So it's unanimous. The next item we have is the town manager's report. Lisa, you ready for that?
Great, thank you. So I'm pleased to have quite a few appointments today. So first, in accordance with Section 4-2B of the Town Charter and Chapter 5 of the Town of Winchester Code of Bylaws, I made the following reappointments for a term to expire March 31st, 2023. And. So I thought these were annual appointments, so.
Which ones?
Mary Ellen, Beth, and Sheila.
They are, so it should be 2022.
Sorry about that. So the memo should be 2022. So I'll amend my motion to, the terms expire March 31st, 2022, to Mary Ellen Lannan, Town Clerk, Beth Rudolph, Town Engineer, and Sheila Tracy, Town Treasurer/Collector.
Second.
You don't need a waiver 15 day, right? I do not, no.
I will say that Mary Ellen Lannan, Sheila Tracy, and Beth Rudolph have served the town for many years in extraordinary circumstances, especially this last year where everybody in Town Hall and throughout the town has been working in extraordinary circumstances and putting hours after hours after hours. And we thank them and we are thankful to have them for another year.
Great. Okay, so no vote is required. That's just for your information. I do have several commission appointments, so the historic commission, reappointing Jonathan Carlisle and Jack Lemanager and appointing Michelle McCarthy. All terms expire March 31st, 2024. Okay, and then for my select board update, just a few things to note. So the Finance Committee has been voting on various budgets. I just want to let you know that earlier this week, they did vote to restore $117,000 in cuts. I'm sorry, this was the last week, $170,000 in cuts to the DPW. So in the budget book, you'll see that there's an original request from the DPW. I had cut that in my budget and those have been restored by FinCom. The police budget was also voted on and their vote did include the full budget for the mental health clinician position. We also submitted earmarks to State Senator Lewis's office and Rep. Day's office last week for projects that were in the amount of the cap, so they capped it at $100,000 each for a trauma screener at the transfer station and improvements at Winter Pond. These earmarks are going to be part of the state's budgeting process. So if they are granted, we'll find out when the budget is passed and then the money will be available probably sometime in the fall and must be spent by June, the end of June 2022. ANCA awarded a $5,000 grant to the Griffin Museum for the Photaville Fence Project. The Cultural Council also gave them $1,500 for that project. And today, we actually got the signs to put up the cultural district markers in four locations and those will be up shortly this week. The Recreation Department has been doing a review of the various recreation facilities for what will be open and not open for the summer. Borgard Beach and the Splash Pad. They have a number of both capital and operating financial issues. I have a more extensive memo regarding this from the Recreation Department. But there's a need for a lot of extensive repairs and it's also, it's usually something that we have to subsidize every year. So we're not recommending, actually that last part should be, we're not recommending opening up the beach or the Splash Pad for the summer because of the cost and because of the state of repair. The company that actually designed and operates the facility, I think the individual has retired. So we actually don't have somebody readily on hand who can help us get that facility up and running quickly. So we are just letting folks know. On the housing front, the Cambridge Street 40B appeal has been dismissed per settlement between the developers and the private parties. And this means the project can proceed. We heard this last week, nothing yet to the building department, but I will certainly let you know. And two affordable housing units at Winning Farm have been approved with conditions by the Department of Housing and Community Development. Also, there is a project at Town Hall, the lower level, will be replacing the floors. There is asbestos tiles down there. So we will actually have to close the entire lower level and relocate all of the operations down there, which is quite a feat. So a lot of those departments will be going to other sections of Town Hall. Like the Board of Health will be in the Select Board Room. There'll also be other departments that are in the auditorium and they'll also be in the Winchester Room. So they're going to be working remotely as they're going to be, to have the movers come in and actually move everybody. And we do hope to have them back in their offices by the middle of June. But in the meantime, it is delaying our plans to completely reopen Town Hall. So we think that we're going to aim for July 1st. So give some wiggle room between when they move back in and when we know that we can have the departments in full operation, have the ADA accessibility and so on. So that's our current plan right now. And we are planning on opening up the front lobby sooner than that, but because of the ADA accessibility and because of the remoteness of the departments, we're still trying to figure out the, you know, the phone systems and, you know, how we can access those other departments. So all that stuff is being worked out right now. Last but not least, we are having almost weekly, they're not every week, but almost weekly COVID testing for $20 for the public or free for town employees at Town Hall. And then there's also several post-April vacation clinics. So we have all those, the information to sign up and the meeting dates at winchester.us/testing.
Thanks, Lisa. Anybody have any questions for Lisa? Hearing none. We now come to matters from the audience or public comment. Is anybody here for that? I guess you would raise your hand. Not sure how this works.
Yes, they do.
Okay. All right, well, seeing none. I'll move on.
There is. Yeah, Michelle Walsh. And then there's another person also, Heidi.
All right, so can you cope with dealing that, elevating them or calling on them?
Yes, Michelle is already ready and she's unmuted.
Okay, and I would only remind these two people that we would like you to state your name and your street for the record when you make your comment. Go ahead.
Hi, this is Michelle Walsh. Hi, everybody. You know what I'm here to talk about. I'm at 45 Wildwood Street in Winchester. I appreciate you hearing from me tonight. And I don't want to belabor an item that will be on your later agenda, but I wanted to make sure I came in and made comments separately from the comment that will be made later on as an abutter, as opposed to a member of the Traffic Advisory Committee. I went back and looked at all my emails, both over the weekend and today, about the Woodside Corridor here and the promises made by the town dating back to 2016 and even prior on this project. The town invested, as you all know, in April of 2017, or before that, but was released in April of 2017, $80,000 for a study for improvements along the corridor. And in the time since then, in 2018, in 2019, in 2017, all we heard about regarding this study was there will be money coming from Eversource. If we just wait through the Eversource project, we will be able to fund some of these improvements here on Woodside Road. And low and behold, as Eversource, as the negotiation with Eversource went on and $185,000, I believe, was secured for it, turns out that in contrast to the promises that were made, that there would be, I have an email from the select board saying that there was going to be a meeting of neighbors to talk about the Eversource funding, using the Eversource funding. None of those meetings ever took place. The TTAC gave its priorities. I'm sure you heard from different abutters about their priorities. Certainly, the Friends of Winter Pond chimed in with their priorities. And, you know, certainly Lisa Wong did her best, as well as the engineer, to balance all of those priorities, as did the select board to a certain extent, and tried to make everybody happy, secured some funds from Town Meeting. But it appears from all indications that Eversource will come back and put the road back together this spring after the work is done and not complete any of the work contemplated in the tool study that is now four and a half years old. So I am just here to comment once again, to be the thorn in the side of the committee, to say that the abutters are really pushing for this, would love to see something gone, and it would be a shame to see an opportunity like this after so much of the town's money and time and everybody's efforts have been spent to see nothing come out of the Eversource project when the road is put back together. And, you know, when little, little things, it doesn't have to be a capital improvement plan, but when little things come together, it goes a long way around here. I would call out Jay Gill in particular and looking through my emails, you know, on the two occasions that somebody ran over a tree in front of my house, crashing around the corner, you know, the curbs were eventually raised. And there's little things like that that can go a long way to calming the traffic here. And I just implore the select board to look at this issue once again and fulfill some of the promises that have been made over time. That's it. Thank you.
Susan, if I could just comment there?
Sure.
Thanks, Shelley. I know that we've been exchanging emails a little bit. The select board did have meetings with staff, actually onsite, out on Woodside Road, and identified priorities. And we also met with Friends of Winter Pond out there as well. And as you know, it can seem like a lot of money when you get mitigation funds from Eversource for $175,000, but when you're doing a lot of design and planning, it ends up being only a piece of the greater puzzle. So I think the select board has indicated that the priority is the intersection work, but that we're going to be really redoing along Woodside Road, the intersection, Chesterford, that area in multiple phases in combination with Chapter 90 money from the DPW Department and certainly some other funds that will add on to the Eversource mitigation and repaving the road and doing all of that. So the Eversource project took longer than we anticipated. I think the COVID impact impacted their project as well as some other structural issues that they found. So I think that there's, this is something that we've been talking about very consistently over the past year. And I know Beth Rudolph and staff has been working on it pretty regularly as well. So I'm not sure where it came from that we were abandoning this. It's, you know, right at the top of our list and it's part of the capital process and we're, you know, we're moving as quickly as we can. But to your question about the intersection, that's a priority and something that we will probably be working on within the year.
Thank you, Shelley. Thanks, Mike. And there was somebody else, but I have lost track of the name. Is it Michelle? No, Michelle Walsh.
It's Heidi.
Heidi Delio.
Hi, thank you very much for allowing me to speak tonight. I am speaking on behalf of several business owners on Thompson Street in regards to parking spaces and availability. As you well know, parking in downtown Winchester has been a commodity for as long
to see an opportunity like this after so much of the town's money and time and everybody's efforts have been spent to see, um, nothing come out of the Eversource project, uh, when the road is put back together. And you know, it, when little, little things, it doesn't have to be a cap- capital improvement plan, but when little things, um, come together, it goes a long way around here. I would call out Jay Gill in particular and looking through my emails, you know, on the two occasions that somebody ran over a tree in front of my house, crashing around the corner, you know, the the curbs were eventually raised and there's little things like that that can go a long way to calming the traffic here. And I just implore the Select Board to look at this issue once again and, uh, fulfill some of the promises that have been made over time. That's it. Thank you.
Susan, if I could just comment there?
Sure.
Um, th- thanks Shelley. I, I know that we've been exchanging emails a little bit. Um, the, this Select Board did, um, have meetings with staff, um, actually onsite, um, out on Woodside Road. Um, and identified priorities and we also met, um, with, uh, Friends of Winter Pond out there as well and, uh, uh, as you know, uh, it, it can seem like a, a lot of money when you get mitigation funds from Eversource for 175,000, but when you're doing a lot of design and planning, it ends up being only a piece of the greater puzzle. So I think the Select Board has indicated that uh, the priority is the intersection work, um, but that we're going to be, um, really redoing uh, along Woodside Road, the intersection Chesterford, that area in multiple phases in combination with, uh, Chapter 90 money, um, from, uh, the DPW Department, um, and, uh, certainly, uh, some other, uh, funds that will add on to the Eversource mitigation and uh, repaving the road and doing all of that. So the Eversource project took longer than, um, we anticipated. I think the, um, COVID impact, um, impacted their project as well as some, uh, other structural issues that they found. So, um, I, I think that there's, um, this is something that we've been talking about, uh, very consistently over the past year. And I know Beth Rudolph and staff has been working on it, um, pretty regularly as well. So I'm not sure where it came from that we were abandoning this. Um, it, it's, you know, right at the top of our list and it's part of the capital process and we're, um, you know, we're, we're moving as, as quickly as we can, but, um, to your question about the the intersection, um, that's a priority and, and something that we will, um, probably be working on, um, within the year.
Thank you Shelley. Thanks Mike. And there was somebody else, but I have lost track of the name. Is it Michelle? No, Michelle Walsh.
It's Heidi.
It's Heidi. Heidi DeLeo.
Hi, thank you very much for allowing me to speak tonight. Um, I am speaking on behalf of several business owners, um, on Thompson Street in regards to um, parking spaces and availability. Um, as you well know, parking in downtown Winchester has been a commodity for as long as I can remember and the town and others have been working very hard to come up with some alternative plans, um, during the MBTA's construction and, and, uh, other, uh, projects that are going on. We appreciate all your hard work that you've done with this. We do know that the warmer weather is here and coming even more and outdoor dining is starting and we are asking that dining, um, permits only be issued um, in front of the, um, location of the restaurant, um, as to mitigate and take up a lot less parking than was last year. Um, retailers, especially on Thompson Street have found that loss of parking spaces on Thompson Street has really affected our businesses. And we would implore you to seriously consider issuing any more reduction in parking spaces along Thompson Street. And my speaking goes in conjunction with a letter that I, an email that I sent, um, this afternoon regarding the same listing, the businesses that, um, indicated to me that we, they were in support of objecting to more parking being taken away. So thank you for your consideration, um, in the upcoming matters. Thank you.
Thanks Heidi. So, um, moving on down the agenda, uh, there's no Controller's Report this evening, I believe. And that brings us, we don't have licenses. That brings us to our business agenda. And just scanning down here, um, I guess we'll take them in order and the, the first one is, um, the T-TAC update and Woodside Corridor discussion. Let's see who's here. It's, I guess Ben Keeler.
And Roger is here.
And then I guess I, there are a number of people here for all of the, um, committee and commission appointments and we'll do that next.
This is Ben. Thanks for the time. Appreciate it.
Thanks for coming.
No problem. Um, so I do have, uh, as you mentioned, Roger, uh, David Anderson, uh, our Vice Chair was going to join as well. And um, I do have a couple of slides if I'm, I have the opportunity to share.
I'm sorry now.
Okay, thank you. Let me just get these up quickly. Well, appreciate everyone taking the time, obviously. Um, you know, as I speaking on behalf, uh, my name is Ben Keeler. I'm, uh, a resident, uh, of Winchester, co-chair of, uh, the Traffic and Transportation Committee. Appreciate everyone taking the time. Uh, yeah, wanted to take this opportunity, um, to, to spend time with, with yourselves, make sure that, uh, we give Select Board Member Muji, um, uh, some background and, and obviously just to, to get your opinions on where you'd like us to focus going forward. Um, I, I don't want to spend, uh, too much time, uh, specifically on the Wildwood and Woodside Corridor uh, topic until the end. I know that that was a, a conversation that we'd like to have. I'll, I'll sort of move through very quickly here with our update. And, you know, happy to take any questions and then, you know, progress on to a more focused discussion around Wildwood and Woodside. So just for, uh, background and familiarity, you know, we, uh, as a, as a group have been formed, uh, a little over three years ago and in some ways, more than that, working with Lance and, and others from the Select Board. Now, our focus is specifically to, uh, you know, positively impact how the town plans, builds and maintains public spaces and public ways, um, to better support the movement of all residents in all modes of transportation. Where that takes us specifically, um, and obviously we've, we've sort of worked with, uh, different various members of the Select Board in terms of honing our focus. But are reaching sort of a level of maturity now, um, where most of our time and energy is specifically focused on, on three areas, uh, traffic calming and resident safety being, uh, the utmost, uh, pillar of, of, of our focus. But along with that promoting multimodal transportation, um, so making sure that all residents, regardless of modes of transportation, you know, are, are provided, uh, equal access and are accommodated as part of our, uh, design and then investment in the town. Second, connecting neighborhoods, um, and probably, uh, and, and really importantly, connecting green and blue spaces. Um, that, that's been, you know, certainly connecting neighborhoods, uh, Winchester is a, is a town of neighborhoods and, and we want to make sure that people have the opportunity to live that sort of 15-minute, um, lifestyle that, uh, that, that a lot of people come to town for. And we want to make sure we maintain that to allow people to move around town on foot. Or other, i- in other ways, you know, non-vehicular traffic and make sure they enjoy all the amenities now. Uh, certainly with COVID, um, as a, as a focus, that access to green and blue spaces has been a priority, uh, especially as of, uh, last spring and, and summer. We would, you know, certainly like to continue that. Our town has, um, these amenities to share, but without, you know, really, uh, the proper investment, um, those amenities aren't available, uh, to our residents and in many cases are dangerous to access. Uh, that's, that, that's obviously a focus for, for our group. Um, and then lastly, uh, and you know, we, we talk about it fairly regularly as supporting local businesses, um, in a couple of different ways. We, we do, um, keep an eye out for parking and parking related issues and opportunities, um, but also, uh, trying to again encourage foot traffic to support local businesses. And that's generally how we organize our time, um, and spend, uh, you know, our, our time as a, as a committee broadly. You know, accomplishments, I'll, I'll move through this quickly. You know, certainly the, the focus of our, uh, committee and the reason why we, we were created, um, was to help, uh, put a scaffold underneath the trade and needs for the town, um, generally. There's many, many constituencies that obviously have a vested interest, uh, in addition to individual residents, um, here in traffic and transportation, but it wasn't really ever, um, focused, um, as a, you know, I'm a consultant, so I'll use the word deliverable. There was never any, you know, one plan, uh, specifically that, that focused on, um, transportation and, and, and public ways. In fact, that was, you know, even at the beginning of our effort, it was called the Road Book. We don't refer to it like that anymore, um, because we, you know, we do, we do believe that our mandate here is to look beyond simply roads. And to make sure that we're accommodating the needs of all of our residents. So completing that, policy work, especially as it relates to road striping sidewalks and to give Jay, um, engineering and the planning, uh, the town planner, uh, sort of guide, guide rails to, and guardrails to work with it, um, and targets to hit. Um, that has been a focus for, for us, um, acquiring new funds. You know, whether it be through grant or otherwise, I want to talk about that as, as part of our, uh, one of our other topic areas here. That's something we could do a better job of. Something as a, as a group, we talked about, um, but we would like to spend more time and, and try to make sure that, you know, we're uh, creating a bigger pot, uh, to draw from, uh, for transportation-related, um, efforts, um, in town. Uh, and then some of the others that I, I mentioned, I mean, certainly, you know, working with the other committees, I mentioned that we're, um, advancing in terms of our maturity. Um, a lot of that's just come from, um, working with other, uh, groups in town. That would include Council on Aging, Climate Change, um, Saferoots to School, all of those, you know, we, we overlap in terms of goals so much. So, you know, we, we do coordinate with those efforts and we want to continue that coordination and advocacy for, you know, many constituencies. You know, big picture. And we talk about it all the time, um, obviously as it relates to the, the, the recent yes vote on, on Prop 1. And, you know, just, just getting through decades of flooding work. You know, we, we draw a lot of parallels there as it relates to traffic. Now, certainly we've had some reprieve during COVID. But, you know, we see the, the issues very similarly. Um, there's a lot of external influences that go beyond our control. Uh, density, um, in surrounding areas is not something we control. But the infrastructure and, and, and providing people with safe pathways to move through town and then residents to move within town. You know, accommodating that density is, is, you know, is a very similar, um, challenge. I would also draw, you know, a lot of parallels to how the town has attacked, um, uh, the, the flood mitigation issues. Um, long-term planning, focused goals on, you know, individual segments, uh, to build a comprehensive plan. Uh, again, is something that, uh, aligns with, uh, the work and, um, of our committee very closely. We could use a new approach, um, as it relates to, uh, designing and funding, uh, transportation and, um, and, and again, not necessarily just, uh, car transportation, but all transportation within town and make investments for the benefit of the town. You know, there are very, very critical needs. They impact our livelihood. They impact, uh, local business. They impact our kids. And, you know, obviously, uh, developing a systematic approach, uh, to those improvements is something that we want to work with you on long-term. We haven't to date worked, um, as closely with, uh, the, uh, through the capital process. But we, we definitely see it as a gap, um, and we want to again, uh, work with your, uh, your body, um, and others, uh, within town. I want your, you want your, uh, input and guidance on the best way to do that. Okay, so it's, uh, just quickly, specific, uh, requests for today. I'll, uh, pen the Woodside and, and Wildwood conversation here for one second. Uh, specific asks. Wedgemere. Um, and we've talked about this, uh, obviously the calendar has changed, uh, quite a bit, um, in terms of uh, activity as it relates to both Wedgemere and, you know, uh, more importantly, Town Center and the MBTA Station. We have secured funding, um, through wayfinding, uh, grants for wayfinding signage, um, and those kinds of things to improve the bike path and the connection from the formal bike path to, uh, down Mystic Valley Parkway, uh, to Shannon Beach. And we've, uh, it's similar to what Michelle mentioned, uh, before, we've kind of pended those activities because of the Eversource, uh, work, um, that, that had been active, which, which totally makes sense. But especially now, as it relates to having, you know, the prospect of having, uh, the downtown MBTA Station closed for, you know, somewhere in the range of two to three years. That is an acute area which you can work with the town staff, uh, to improve access, um, in that area. Obviously the work at Wedgemere, um, needs to be completed in some form in order to do it. But if we don't improve the access, if we don't use that opportunity, um, with the influx of, uh, cars that are likely to be parked, you know, down at that, the overflow parking down at that Shannon Beach area, then we're not doing, you know, we're not doing our job. And we've talked about it a number of times. We've talked about, you know, now's not the right time. This summer is the right time, you know, um, and again, I'll, I'll take, um, you know, guidance from, uh, town staff and working specifically with Eversource, but I would call your uh, attention to that specifically as something that you can take on, um, that will have a lasting impact. Uh, not just to get us through the next couple of years, but it's a, it's a, it's a piece of access that we've been asking for. We have additional wayfinding, uh, money, um, available and we want to, we want to use that. Uh, but we need your help, uh, working with staff in order to make that a priority. Okay. Long-term improvements, uh, again, I won't spend a lot of time on that. It will be an area of focus for us, but to, to draw your attention. You know, we get inbound, uh, requests from many residents, um, in all different precincts, um, and neighborhoods. But I will say that specifically, um, we have gotten a couple of inbound requests recently, um, uh, targeting the, the intersection at Bacon and Mystic Valley Parkway. Very, very dangerous, high activity, um, in terms of all modes of transportation. And so as a, as an area of focus going forward, again, knowing that we can't do everything at once and certainly, you know, we've, we've got lots of different, uh, projects to take on. That's one, uh, that we should be thinking about both short-term and long-term, right? There are things that we can do in that area short-term, uh, to help us. And then there are opportunities long-term and, and again, I would encourage the board, uh, just to keep that in here, um, in your mind as you, as you move forward. All right. Lastly, just to solicit, uh, solicit opinion, um, interested in, you know, our job is, uh, is obviously to, to act as an, in an advisory capacity for you. You know, we do get, uh, we've, we've been brought in on a number of different efforts recently, uh, Church and Waterfield, the Downtown Improvement Program, obviously, uh, we'll talk about Woodside and Wildwood and, and those kinds of things, but we do want to make sure that we're providing you with, uh, the right, um, the right areas of focus. And I, I'll, I'll just pause there and, and sort of open it up for the group. You know, asking for your opinions, um, asking for, you know, where you, where you believe you would get the most benefit out of our committee going forward.
Thank you, Ben. T-TAC is invaluable and, um, I'm, I'm very glad that, um, you've been able to sort of, um, synthesize and, and update a lot of things that, uh, have been work, been going on and, um, to suggest some areas for the future, including, um, that intersection of Bacon and Mystic Valley Parkway. That's certainly a very busy intersection and, and could need some attention. So, um, thank you. Does anybody, um, anyone on the board have any questions or comments?
Just a couple of quick, uh, comments if, uh, if I could. Um, and say thank you to Ben and Roger and, uh, everyone on the committee, uh, um, you know, it, it, when you start getting into the traffic studies and looking all over town, there's just so much that can be done and, uh, and then you are just kind of have sticker shock, you know, for how much this stuff costs, you know, um. I, I know that, uh, when I first came on the board, I thought that the Johnson and Ridge intersection, um, was going to be a, a cheap stop sign fix and, you know, million plus dollars later in several years, it's, you know, still goes, it's still going. So, um, so we, we appreciate, um, all that and certainly a lot of the uh, policy engagement that you've had in, um, other, um, areas around town and other projects. One of the, um, I won't comment yet on, uh, the Woodside and Wildwood projects. I already have a little bit, but, um, you know, I think one of the things that, um, kind of longer, you know, on the longer or short-term, uh, side is looking at, um, maybe re-establishing, uh, local bus service, you know, um, like the Lexpress in Lexington. We, um, when Lance and I were, were talking about putting together the, um, the Road Book and, uh, the, uh, T-TAC, you know, we had kind of looked over Lexington to see if that kind of multimodal option would be there. And I think we were a little surprised that it actually, uh, financially wasn't that, um, that expensive. Um, and would certainly, especially now that we're, uh, kind of clogged up the town center with a lot of construction work, especially with the MBTA project and everything, it might be time to, to bring it back. I mean, it was, um, I think maybe in the mid-eighties, um, early nineties Winchester had uh, that kind of circle, uh, circuit of, um, you know, kind of smaller buses that were moving around town and, um, it seems like it might be the time for us to, to revisit that, especially looking at, um, creating a network for, um, after-school programs and things like that. But I don't know if you guys have talked about that at all.
We have. Um, and, and I, I will say that those conversations were, um, you know, they, they were, uh, pretty early. We were, we were just talking about options, uh, obviously not getting in, you know, as, as far down in terms of, uh, financial considerations specifically. I mean, obviously, you know, having transportation options available to say like the Council on Aging through the, through the Jenks Program, having, you know, what we talked about was, um, you know, how do we replicate that? How do we leverage that? And, you know, we, so we, we were talking more at the, at the options level, but, but certainly we have discussed it, um, you know, what I think, I think we're aligned with the Planning Office and, and, um, and others and, and knowing that if we're really going to reduce, you know, the number of cars on our roads that, you know, having options like, uh, like buses and otherwise, um, are really going to be one, it's going to be a huge, uh, element in, in doing that. And provide it reliably, uh, safely. safely and in a cost-effective manner. You know, it's definitely something that, that we've discussed and, and we can talk about in more length. Thank you. Anything else?
Yeah, Ben, I was also going to mention the buses, but since Mike mentioned it, I'll mention one more thing. I think it would be helpful for the committee to work on, how can we provide more safer paths for people who are not using cars, so bicycles, pedestrians. I'm thinking, you know, Palmer and Lake Street is not a place where, you know, I feel safe having myself or my kids riding bikes there because cars was by, you know, forty, fifty miles an hour. So, I know some areas of town are very well-connected with the Tri-Community Greenway. But how, you know, how else can we leverage those connections? Like, for example, the, the path to Horn Pond, it ends on Lake. How do we connect it to further south and west down Palmer Street and also where the Greenway ends at Wedgemere? You know, how do we connect that with, you know, Sandy Beach or how do we connect that with Medford? For people who will commute by bike to, to the new Green Line Extension, right, or other further in town. I think that would be very helpful.
All right, well, I appreciate that, Mariano. I mean, I'll, I'll speak, you know, obviously, we, we have a number of advocates. You know, as part of the committee that are, that are focused on, on bikes. I'm not one of them, right? I mean, I'm, I enjoy a good bike, but I'm not, you know, I'm not commuting to work in that, that capacity. But I will say that, you know, through the course of our discussions, you know, what's, what's been pretty clear is we can do a lot more and it's not just for commuters, right? It's for our kids. You know, we've, we, we take on formative conversations about working with schools that have previously told kids not to ride bikes, right? That's just wrong. Not because of, not because people are making decisions that aren't in the, you know, for, for safety of our kids, but that should be the goal, right? We should be giving all residents an opportunity to, to, to move through town in a non-car situation. And, and I, I appreciate that. We, we do talk about it regularly. I know that there's, you know, specifically an opportunity in downtown, you know, and to, to help connect the, the bike path, both the, the southern part and then, you know, moving up northern into, into Horn Pond. Here you up on, on Lake Street. I would encourage you as well that, you know, one of, one of the things that, that, that we focused on is the, the section of the bikeway between Skilling's and Morocco. It's, it's, it's there, but it's not, you know, it, it certainly is not full of amenities that make people feel safe. And again, recognizing budgetary constraints and, and other priorities, that's a gap. That's something that, you know, we want to fix and I would encourage you to continue to look, you know, along that, that network to try to do that. Lastly, I'll just say that there are places like on the west side of town where, you know, we may not be able to map some, you know, network that goes on forever, but there are specific areas that we can focus on that can just help organically build that network and specifically, you know, focus on like VO to Wright Lock Farm is an area that we're going to invest. We want people to be able to make that trip and connect those two real institutions in town safely. And I think we can do better to do it. It might just be on one side of the street to do it. Maybe we save some money by doing that, but I think those are areas, you know, that, that we can really invest.
Yeah, thank you, Ben.
Thank you. All right, any other comments?
Amy, Rich, anyone?
Yeah, no, Ben, I just wanted to thank you and I think just, I was thinking actually about the VO area specifically because I drive up the hill every day for school and I'm watching people come down the hill at fast speeds and I do see oftentimes, they're probably middle schoolers and high schoolers zooming down on their bikes down that hill and I'm just wait, so that, that is one area I would love to, you know, address and look at and figure out is there a way to at least slow it down or provide some space for them to bike safely? So that is one, it's just because of the speeds, I think, are so extreme going down that hill. It's something I've noticed. So, but thank you so much for all your work on this. It's really important.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just echo Amy's sentiments. Ben, Roger, thank you for all your work. As I'm getting up to speed here, I'm learning more about T-TAC and the involvement in the town. I think it's good work and I look forward to working with you on some of these projects going forward.
Thanks, Rich. We're, we're looking forward to the same. Thank you. Okay, so let's just, you know, turn very quickly to Woodside, Wildwood and Woodside Corridor. Again, I'm, I'm probably not, I'll probably kick this conversation off and, and then I'm expecting others to, to jump in. I'll make my comments quickly here and, and then, you know, allow others to opine. You know, obviously have a, have a quick snapshot of kind of the timeline. Michelle laid that out earlier and some of the drivers and issues that we're running into. Most important thing, you know, probably is to say that we're having this conversation about Wildwood and Woodside. There are some very unique characteristics to that corridor. But more importantly, there's just a lot of commonality in everything that's happening along that corridor with the rest of our town. You know, you, you talk about Johnson, you talk about High Street. You know, Cross Street, you know, all of those, you know, have some of the same issues. Generally speaking, it's high volume, higher speed than those roads were originally really built for. Very little infrastructure, you know, put into the roadway other than the asphalt. And in a lot of cases, it's gotten to the point where it's really choking off pedestrian or bike activity. And certainly, there's nowhere to cross. This is, this is just a, you know, basics. This happens throughout town and it's, it's just part of our design. Anytime you have a road that has become more well-traveled and is accommodating, you know, a higher speeds. What's happened is we're just, we're, we're not allowing people to cross the street because we're scared of what's going to happen. And yet, that, by, by taking that stance, we're, we're kind of saying, well, it's not safe. I, I think that T-TAC broadly as, as a committee, you know, our, our charge is probably to not take that line down, right? And, and to, to try to, to, to fight for the residents to, you know, make good use of those amenities that are around. Mitigation funds, great. We don't get that in a lot of places. And, and, you know, Michael mentioned it previously, it doesn't go very far. But it's nice to have, you know, in this case, we're going to get some help and have had some help in covering design and, and engineering. There's no improvement going on. Eversource isn't responsible for that. And in many ways, they're leaving the conditions worse than when they found them. And as a town, you know, we started in two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, probably before. You know, if you, if you, if you take into other communications, now we're in twenty twenty-one and we haven't made any improvement. Right? We're not planning, you know, when we do make improvements, it's pulling teeth, you know, and we're, and we're still trying to figure out. We're going to lay out a, you know, we laid out a program like seven different traffic calming elements that would include things like a median island for pedestrians at Pond, which is very important for, for kids and, and kids traveling to Lynch, things like those, those things aren't funded. And they're continuing not to be funded, even in the case where we have mitigation funding. So, you know, there's, 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 there's so many different parallels here. We just got to focus, make sure that, you know, as a town, we understand here are the elements to finishing the job and then figure out a way to obviously allocate capital to help us finish those jobs. The last thing I'll just note is, you know, it's, it is what it is, right? We're not going to, we're not going to go in the past. But if this, if this Wildwood and Woodside Corridor is indicative of what we're going to do in many other, what, what is needed in many other areas in the town, we have to use the money and the effort as well as we possibly can. We can't afford to be redoing work. We can't afford to be missing opportunities. And in order to do that, unfortunately, it requires more planning, more ownership of an overall vision. More opportunities, more opportunism, looking for those opportunities and more coordination, you know, especially with third party. So we sent a note, a memo to the Select Board last week or the week before asking specifically for a meeting along with the town staff and Eversource to work through that, to make sure specifically that when Eversource was, you know, doing their mitigation work that they were responsible for, that we were looking for opportunities and we are looking for ways that we can make improvements, even if they're small and tactical. We haven't heard back on that. That would be my ask to you is to, is to help us facilitate that conversation, recognizing that, you know, you guys see the, the, the same benefits in that, in that level of coordination. All right, so I'll stop there and I'm not sure if there are any questions specifically about the work or a request for, for additional coordination or if we need to take comment from, from others.
If, if I could just ask a question, Ben, just before getting into Woodside, kind of dovetails into that. But in terms of T-TAC, how are you prioritizing projects? And, and my question really is, we have so much construction happening in this town. Is T-TAC looking at, you know, the areas that are going to be under construction? It usually takes a little while for us to design, implement, embed and, and, and complete those projects. Are we looking at what's going to be under construction in the next few years and figuring out if there's any recommendations that T-TAC has to make improvements along what you're recommending over at Woodside or someone like that?
Yeah, well, thanks, Rich. We, we, we certainly, we do work, we, we are staffed. Our committee is accommodated staff, including Beth, Brian Zekely and Jay Gill. So we, we do work on that. We get visibility into, into where the, the town is going in term, from a planning perspective and to make sure that we are, you know, constantly looking forward. Unfortunately, you know, because of the current situation, we do get pulled down into, into some pretty tactical things at times. I think from a, from a long-term planning perspective, as you can tell from my presentation before, that's where we want to focus. Forty-B and Cross Street specifically, we know that those are areas that are going to require investment, especially for kids that may live in that area. And, and let's just take, let's take that, 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 you know, Cross Street Corridor as an example that may potentially have to cross over and go over to Lynch, right? How are we accommodating those kids and to do that in, in advance? We want to be able to do that. So certainly Forty-B, Washington Swanton, you know, we expect that there's going to be more development and want to make sure that we're sort of tied in to those efforts. We certainly see that. We did also get invited and really appreciate the involvement in the Downtown Improvement Plan. So, well, that improvement plan is sort of focused on the town center. There's discussions already about, you know, making sure that we continue those efforts, sort of the North Main area, which will, which is obviously an area of investment for the town. So that's really good. We want to get, you know, continue to align there. As I mentioned, getting ahead of it to capital and talking about where the gaps are is not a place that we've gotten yet. But certainly on our, on our radar, you know, once we, once we get things setted down. The last thing I'll mention, Rich specifically, we have priorities. T-TAC has priorities. What's probably more important is your priorities than the town manager's priorities. We are an advisory committee. We will give you advice. But ultimately, we don't own it on a day-to-day basis. You do. So I think we, we spent, you know, probably a good year after our formation, talking a lot about priorities before we figured out, you know what, we, we want to have an agenda. We want, we want to be able to advise you and, and to talk to you about our priorities, but it doesn't matter if they don't get down to you and the staff. So we want to work on it collaboratively. Happy to put a, you know, bulleted list out there. But, but what's probably more important is that we're listening to you and accommodating your, your priorities as well.
Great, thank you. And you mentioned capital and that is a key consideration, how to sort of make this effort work in a linear way to get into the capital queue and to get the funding that we need to do some of the larger things. Anyone else with a question for Ben or a comment?
Just make a quick comment, Susan, if I could. So, one of the Select Board policies that we adopted a few years ago, and I imagine, although Select Boards, as we kind of evolve over the years and change membership, you know, we are not necessarily tied to those policies, but I imagine the board would, would still adopt the policy where any sort of school construction project triggers a traffic study, you know, in the area. So the Lynch School Project is going to be another great opportunity for us as it was with the McCall, the Phase One and Phase Two expansion, where we did very large projects on Main Street in front of McCall and on Mystic Valley Parkway. Those were, those were pretty, pretty significant traffic calming projects. And so if, when, when we look at the area around Pond Street and Woodside, that, that probably is going to be, you know, right, right in that area where we're going to be looking for the traffic study. Although, you know, we'll be looking in a, a pretty wide radius around there to see how kids are getting there, how safe it is for vehi- vehicular traffic, but also pedestrian traffic and certainly other multimodal transportation options. So, so that's the good news because what we, you know, what we were able to do is kind of add some funding to those projects through the school construction projects. So we can kind of bond some of that money and it's a way for us to get funds where we otherwise don't have access to them. So that's, that's good. But we, we certainly will be prioritizing the intersection work at, that's designed and, you know, engineered and we're ready to go on the intersection of Wildwood and Woodside. That whole area, Woodside, will be, will be paved and will be, you know, taken care of. That, that we know is going to happen. And as I said before, it's going to be a combination of funds from different sources to get that done because a lot of it got tied up with the one seventy-five from Eversource, a lot of it got tied, tied up with different different studies and engineer project in that area. So, so, but it's, it's going to be done. So I mean, if, I know it's kind of a question of, is this ever going to happen? I mean, Eversource really just finished doing that project there. So, and still have to come back and do some more. So even though we maybe started negotiating the transmission line projects back, I think at first, I think you're right, it first came, it was right when I first came on the board. So in twenty fifteen, you know, we really didn't have an agreement with them and they didn't really start construction for years later. So, you know, it's, seems like a long time we've been talking about it, but as far as the construction of the one fifteen line there, it's, you know, just finishing. So we'll, we'll be breaking ground on that project, you know, over the next several months. I can't say when because as Rich was saying, we've got to bid these projects and get them, get them finalized. But that corridor is, is certainly important and, you know, when we look back up on Cross Street, we have added a lot of traffic improvement as part of the River Street Forty-B project that's, that's under construction. So to your point, I think we try to add on these traffic projects to some of the development that's, that's going on in the area where we can to, because our, otherwise our Chapter Ninety money doesn't, doesn't go very far. One of the priorities for us, which kind of took a lot of wind out of our sails for multiple projects this year is the Church and Waterfield Intersection Project there. It's very high traffic, high pedestrian traffic. There is a fatality there. It's prioritized by the Select Board. So that, that's, you know, it, the cost came in a lot higher because the project got a lot more complicated. But, you know, we're, and we're bringing, you know, some of the money into, from the Parking Meter Fund to do that, from some other, you know, we're, we're using every avenue we can to make sure that these projects get done soon because it's, we, we want the community to be safe, but also the longer we wait, just the more the, the projects cost. So we're, we're doing as much as we can.
Yep, I, I appreciate that, Mike, and, and thank you for your comments. I'll wrap up. I know that you guys have, have other business to get to. What I'll, what I'll just tell you is that on Wildwood specifically in, in that, that intersection, we were, you know, obviously, and I- we were, you know, obviously, and I, I don't have the volumes here right at my fingertips, but you're talking about an incredible amount of traffic moving through that area, right? Going through years of disruption as it relates to the, to the construction. And these got, you know, the, the residents aren't receiving any, you know, there's no curbing generally in the area. What might be there, they might put back into like the cobblestones or something like that. That's not, it does, it, you know, if we, if we think about where we want to be from a, you know, complete streets policy, it's curbs and striping, right? And we're not going to get there. And with, with the, with what we're doing right now at Wildwood, you know, we're getting intersection work. And again, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to, you know, look a gift horse in the mouth. This is, you know, it's important work. But what I want to say is that if you don't have a plan and then we get funding from, from other sources like Forty B or something like that, we're going to continue to focus on these, you know, one bits and pieces. If we have a plan for a corridor, we can invest, you know, in that plan and then find alternative sources that, that help us get further along that plan. In a lot of cases, we don't have that. And I think that's where we're struggling is that we continue to, to, to find kind of onesies and twosies. Like you said, I mean, Church and Waterfield, that's, that's half of our budget, you know, essentially for roads, is that one intersection. So, you know, you go out to the entire town, how many, you know, places have those needs? There's a lot of those places. So we just need to be able to, to work towards a plan. I appreciate your comments on the, on the Lynch School. I hope that we can make improvements there. You know, I just don't want to be here in 2030 and talking about putting in a pedestrian island because, you know, there's funding that might happen after Lynch Schools is, is on. And that's, that's what we're going to advocate for. That's what we're going to continue to do. But I appreciate your, your time and your advocacy. We really appreciate it. We're looking forward to working with you guys going forward.
Thank you, Ben. And thank you, Roger and David, for, for joining us. We're going to have to leave it there. We have a full agenda and we have to move on. But thank you and there is much work to be done and we, we will continue to work on all these things.
Thank you.
Susan?
Yes.
A question for the town manager, or I don't know if Beth is, is on the call, but of the 175 for that, is there any left? Are there going to be improvements beyond Eversource just restoring it to previous? Are, are we going to realign Woodside, Wildwood and Wickford? You know, what, what's going to happen? Can we let the residents know what's going to happen this spring and summer there?
So I, yeah, Beth, Beth is not here. I don't want to say anything definitively because of the, you know, the cost might dictate what we end up doing.
Okay, thank you. But we do have some money left for construction, right? Just maybe.
We, we will, we will.
We do, Mariano, we do.
Come back. Yeah. We just, we just, we just don't have the details and, and we don't want to say something that isn't, isn't accurate.
Okay.
Yeah, but thank you. We will get back to that. So we, I'm going to take these things out of order because we have a lot of people who are here for the committee and commission appointments. I think I want to go first to the zoning board of appeals. We have an incumbent and we also have a new person who is, who's stepped up to join the board as an alternate, Robert Tedesco, who's here to, to interview. We have his information and I, I believe he's an attorney and he actually served on the, the Woburn City Council, which does a lot of some zoning work. So I, I, you know, sounds like he has perfect qualifications and I thank him for volunteering. And if we can recognize him to speak, that would be really nice. So he could tell us a little bit about himself.
I don't know, can you hear me yet or?
Yes, there you are.
Hi, good evening, how are you?
We're good, thank you for your patience.
Oh, my pleasure. I've, I've learned to sit through many meetings over the, over several decades. So it's, it's always a pleasure. Thank you, thank you.
So we, we're very, we're very happy that you're, you're willing to join our, the Board of Appeals. Very busy body in our town. So just tell us a little bit about what you, you, you know, why you're volunteering and what you hope to accomplish.
Well, a, as I said in, in my communication to you, that I've been in town for, for 20 years and, and just love the town and I have been a practicing attorney for over 30 years and primarily focusing on the areas of, of real estate and land use and land use planning. That was my focus as a, as a law student. And, and I've really just always worked in that, that area. In fact, I, I was the, the original draft, drafter of the townhouse development zoning ordinance in the city of Woburn. How do we have townhouses develop in residential zones that will fit and that will work within those zones? When we take these large tracts of land. Quail Run is one of the projects that I actually voted on as a member of the city council, which I'm still very proud of, of that vote. We turned what could have been a subdivision of, of hundreds of homes into a more compact development, leaving acres upon acres of open space. And it worked. It worked for the developer, it worked for the neighborhood, it worked for the, for the city. And that's really my focus. I, although I have done some land court litigation, mostly actions to acquire title, I, I do kind of pride myself in my ability to negotiate and to bring the sides together. And let's try to get to, to a, a place where, they always say the, if everybody walks away a little bit unhappy, it's probably a very good negotiation. Everybody's given a little bit and, and then it will work. So I want to bring some of those years of experience to the, to the Board of Appeals. I, I just, I love it, you know, it's, it's what I've done and I want to continue to do.
Well, thank you. That's, that sounds wonderful. Does anybody on the board have a question for Mr. Tedesco?
Just want to say thank you so much for being willing to serve. This is really a great committee to be a part of and we thank you very much.
Anybody else?
Yeah, the, yeah, thank you for volunteering. Do you see any possible conflicts of interest with the position?
No, no, I, any work that I do, I have, I don't do anything in Winchester in, in this regard. Most of my work has, has been in the community where my office is in Woburn. But now I don't, I don't see any, obviously, if, if there were any conflicts of interest, I would obviously have to not, you know, hear that particular matter.
Thank you.
So Mariano, maybe we could move ahead?
Yeah, I move that we appoint Robert Tedesco as an alternate to a term to expire March 31st, 2023rd for the zoning board of appeals.
Second.
Okay, I'll take a roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, so that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Robert, there's no backing out now. You're going to have to.
Okay, that's okay, I look forward to it. Thank you.
Short commute though.
Yes, yeah. Thank you.
And then there was another appointment on the zoning board of appeals.
Yeah, so I move that we reappoint David Bay to a new term for the zoning board of appeals, the new term to expire March 31st, 2024.
Roll call vote. Amy?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Let's see. I believe we need to move to the, let's see, the senior citizen taxation committee, or tax committee. I believe Eddie Jabre is here. A new applicant. Very nice to get new people and new volunteers. The town really runs on volunteer labor.
Yes, this is Eddie.
Thank you for joining us and thank you for your patience.
No problems.
So just tell us a little bit about yourself and, and why you want to be on this committee, please.
We've been living in Winchester for about three and a half decades now, about 35 years. So we've been through the, the changes of the town and participated basically in the, the development of, of, of the town as well. Basically, I have been looking at the, the town taxes regarding seniors and real estate taxes. And I found that it could need a little bit of improvement to make it more fair, the, the taxation pretty much for, for seniors. I look at it as now being in a, having a vision of 2020. Because when we moved in town and all of, all of our kids went through the school district in, in town, I have seen basically how much good that generated for our family. And I feel like if we could not, if we don't address the taxation for seniors in a fair way, or in a more fair way, let's put it this way, the seniors would be at a, this, this advantage because really they would have basically been the driving force for this town to become what it is at this point in time. And most of you who are much younger than I are going to have this 2020 vision once that you reach the, the, the golden age pretty much and you see your kids and the impact of the town on, on your kids. So I have looked at the, at some real estate taxes and I found them that they can be really better than that. As this, these changes or improvements, if you want, would not affect the, the town budget at all. And it's just to be able to have these taxes a little bit more equitable. Let's put it this way. So this is why I would like to be on that board.
Thank you. That makes complete sense. Sometimes I think it's also a question of doing outreach and making sure that seniors are aware of the things that might be available too. So it's good to have people who have been in town for a long time who are able to, you know, to do that work as well.
If you would allow me to add just one thing?
Yes.
And in addition to the above, what I just said, I have really professional expertise. I am an architect. I am an urban planner and I am also a retired contractor. And I have a very good idea of what would be, let's put it this way, the, the estimates or the costs of building a home or adding to a home. So I would bring that to the table as well.
I see. Does anyone on the board have a question? Well, it sounds, it sounds like you're hired.
Okay, so I, I move that we.
Go ahead.
No, good, sorry.
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, I move that we appoint Eddie Jabre to a, to the senior citizen tax committee to a term to expire March 31st, 2023rd.
Second.
Roll call vote. Amy, oh, Amy has stepped out for a moment.
I'm here now.
Oh, you're back.
Yeah, I'm going to step out now.
Okay. So your vote is?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.
Yeah, and I move that we reappoint Harry Rothman to the senior citizen tax committee to a new term to expire March 31st, 2024.
Second.
Roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yep.
Mariano?
Yes.
Amy, I think, is gone, burly. And I vote yes. So that's, yeah, okay. Let's move to the Traffic and Transportation Advisory Committee or T-TAC. We just heard from them and we have two incumbents. And Deanna Lauffer has volunteered to join T-TAC.
Hi.
Is with us.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you for joining us.
Sure, thank you for having me.
So if you could just tell us a little bit about yourself and why you are applying to T-TAC?
Sure. My family just moved to Winchester last September, so we're relatively new residents, but we are happy to be here in town. We moved from Somerville, which was a slightly more urban community, but I really wanted to bring my love of walking and biking when I moved here. And I've probably biked the whole Greenway by now, including most of it with my five-year-old. So I can really speak to the condition of that and we love walking around town. And, and honestly, joining this meeting today has been a bit of baptism for T-TAC. So glad to learn about the committee. But I really want to bring my love of, of biking and walking and just my interest in, in having safe and accessible transportation for everyone to the committee and, and really interested in getting involved with the town as much as I can.
Thank you so much, Deanna. That sounds like a set of very good qualifications. And yes, we're, we're very interested in multimodal transportation and really making that happen. Does anybody have a question for Deanna? Not seeing anyone, oh?
No, I, I don't have a question. I was just going to move.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you for, thank you for volunteering. I move that we appoint Deanna Lauffer to the Traffic and Transportation Advisory Committee to a term to expire March 31st, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second, sorry.
Okay, then roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Amy? Still stepped out. I vote yes.
Okay, I move that we reappoint David Anderson and Ben Keeler, both to the Traffic and Transportation Advisory Committee, both for terms to expire March 31st, 2024.
Second.
Roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Amy? Okay, still absent. I vote yes. Then we have the Local Historic District Study Committee, which is a new committee established either last, at our last meeting or the time before. And this is to study and identify properties for a potential local historic district near Grove Street, in the vicinity of Grove Street. Included in that committee would be two residents, a licensed real estate agent or Realtor, a registered architect and a representative from the Historical Commission. I think with us tonight, we have the two residents and the woman who is the, the real estate agent. That's, so why don't we have them elevated? That's Kathy DiGennaro, Candy Van Aken and Lorraine Murtaugh. Thank you guys for all being interested in this new committee and volunteering to help the town do this important work. So is Kathy able to?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. My full name is Kathy DiGennaro Ho.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
That's okay, Mary's name. Thanks for inviting me and allowing me to, to speak. I, I've been a resident of the town of Winchester for 18 years. Transplant from New Jersey. And in my near future, I'm going to have more time available to me. I'll be taking a buyout package for my work. I'm really excited about that. So my intention is to sort of find opportunities to give back as opposed to just taking for myself the first half of my career. And I love to do. Um, and I love to do research, legal research. I've managed a legal operations team for uh twenty-three years. And um, uh, so it's it's just what I naturally enjoy doing. Um, and I am a resident of Grove Street. Um, uh Candace Van Aken, who is the other resident, I don't know if she is aware of this, but um I live in the house that her husband sold us years ago. So that's an odd connection. Um, and I'm the last house on Grove Street before you go into Medford. Barely make it into Winchester. And I just thought this would be uh very interesting and a good way to give back uh some of my time.
Thank you. That that sounds great. And um, again, you know, Winchester runs on volunteer labor, so thank you for volunteering for this. Anybody have any questions for Kathy?
Okay, uh, seeing none, I move that we um appoint, um, I'm sorry. Um, Patty, do you know when the term expires? I don't have a that on my sheet.
There is no end term. Um, Jack plans to have everything done by um fall town meeting.
I thought it meant that I was never going to stop.
Um, that could actually be the situation.
Yeah, I guess there there really isn't a defined term unlike the other committees.
Okay. So I I move that uh we appoint for the in the determinant term, uh Kathy DiGennaro Ho to the Local Historic District Study Committee.
Second.
Great.
So I'll try to take a roll call vote. Mike?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Um, then is Candace Van Aken here and able to?
Yes, I am.
Can you hear me? Oh, great. Yes, thank you.
Hi, uh, thank you very much for having me this evening. Uh, my name is Candace Van Aken, twenty Grove Street. Uh, and uh to Kathy's uh point, yes, when I saw her name on the list, I said, oh, I can't believe it. Uh, she, uh, they they did purchase uh my my late husband's house back in, what, two thousand and three? Uh, I am a forty-two-year resident of Winchester. Um, and uh the the reason why uh I I moved in uh from New York and uh I was smitten by Winchester, the way that it looked. Uh, I I'm I'm an art teacher. Um, I love the architecture. Uh, I I love the uh proximity to Boston and the uh public transportation gave all kinds of options. Uh, I love the green space and um and and the the downtown actually has come a long way since uh nineteen seventy-nine. Uh, it's much, much better. Uh, but it is a lovely town and um and 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 offers a lot. Um, when I first got involved in the town way way back, I I was more involved than I am at this time. Uh, I I did committee work. Um, uh, the the funny thing was that uh I I I wanted to get on the Historical Commission, but uh the 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 position had been filled. Uh, so I said, well, I I love the look and the history of cemeteries. And um, so I volunteered to be on the newly created uh cemetery advisory committee. What I didn't know at the time is that that was a a hotbed of political uh debate. And it was my introduction to Winchester uh politics. That that goes back to the uh the charter, the Winchester Charter. And the cemetery was uh sort of where the battle lines were being drawn. So, um, anyway, so I I have served on uh the Historical Commission in the past. Uh, I'm currently a town meeting member uh for Precinct Four. Uh, I uh I I I teach art out at Medford High School, and I think that's it.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Candace Van Aken?
No, thank you, Candace, for uh continuing to volunteer uh through this many years in town meeting. And uh, so now I move that we appoint Candace Van Aken to the Local Historic District uh Study Committee.
Second.
Go take a roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. And then we have Lorraine
Hi.
Murtaugh.
Am I connected?
I can hear you.
Oh, good, yep. I was um, I was, I was asked uh to be a candidate by the Greater Boston Real Estate Association. Evidently, you folks had to reach out to them to get a suggested nominee, and that was me. Um, I was on the Mass Association of Realtors Board of Directors for uh some time. And I don't know, I guess they may have remembered that I do well in a group setting. I've always been a puzzled person and I like, I like, I love looking at all sides of something and exploring and researching and getting everybody's viewpoints and learning new things and trying to get everybody to get on a page together and um come to some solution. So I said, sure, I'll, I volunteer. Here I am. I've been a Realtor in town. It'll be thirty-five years in May. And I've sold properties in pretty much every one of our historic and less-than-historic neighborhoods. So um, I'm in love with the town and would like to do anything that's going to help it retain its character.
Thank you, Lorraine. That sounds like a uh pretty perfect set of uh qualifications. And this uh study committee, um, I think, needs to um really collaborate and and work quickly. So I think that that's great. Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Lorraine?
I'm a little bit interested in the optimistic timeline that I just heard of the fall town meeting. Because I I've I've been reading up on um uh some of the Secretary of State's information on how you go about all of this stuff. And it says the usual timeline is about eighteen months. So we're gonna just jump on it fast.
I think I heard fall town meeting, but not which year.
Oh, thank you very much, sir.
We'll see, we'll see.
Questions?
Yeah, so if if there's no questions, I move that we uh appoint Lorraine Murtaugh to the Local Historic District Study Committee.
Second.
Roll call vote. Uh, Mariano?
Yes.
Mike? Guess you're muted, but I saw you say yes. Um, Rich?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.
Isn't I back too?
Oh, okay. Amy?
Yes.
Okay, then it's unanimous. Thanks for letting me know.
Thank you.
Thank all of you, yes, for volunteering for this. Um, I think that's it for people. Patty, correct me if I'm wrong, that's all of the people who are here for interviews?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so um, I'll try to take this in some kind of order. Um, let's talk, there is, uh, I believe, a new applicant who actually couldn't make it due to an emergency for the um Conservation Commission, is one position.
Um, yeah, so do we want to um do the appointment or do we want to reschedule the interview?
Well, he's been on um Conservation Commission before.
Okay.
So I think we should just move ahead.
Okay, so I move that we appoint uh Reed uh Hugh to the Conservation Commission to a term to expire March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Roll call vote. Amy?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So that brings us to the Committee on Names.
Yeah, I move that we reappoint uh Sandra Thompson to a new term to expire March thirty-first, twenty twenty-two to the Committee on Names.
Second.
Uh, roll call vote. Amy?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Um, the Commissioners of Trust Funds.
I move that we reappoint David Riskin to the Commissioner uh Trust Funds for a term to expire March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Roll call vote. Amy?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Then the Board of Registars of Voters is postponed to allow them time to do the uh the nomination process called for under the statute. And will be rescheduled. Um, I guess it's the, go ahead.
So um, we can reappoint Mary Ellen Lannan, since the statute directs us to that one of them must be the town clerk. So
Yep.
Um, if I I move that we reappoint uh Mary Ellen Lannan, the town clerk, uh to the Board of Registars of Voters to a new term to expire March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four uh pursuant to uh Chapter fifty-one, Section fifteen of Massachusetts General Laws, which direct us to uh appoint the town clerk.
Second.
Uh, roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
And for the other position, we will ask both town committees to give us a list of three names, right?
Uh, no, it's just for the Republican Committee. They make the decision, they um
So my understanding is, so by the law, there can be up to two members of each party. And right now, there's two Republicans and one Democrat, so we could appoint from either one?
Okay, because it's it's um Tony Conti, who's Republican, his position that's open. So um, should I be um
Yeah, we should reach out to both because there's there's three total appointees, right?
Yeah, it's un- it's unclear if they've been following this actual process. And I needed to talk with Mary Ellen Lannan as well, just to get a better understanding of what's been going on. Um, that's my reading of the statute as well. If there, whenever there's an opening, both both party town committees do this nomination process and present three names. So that's why I was putting it off, because we need to talk to them. But thank you for raising that. Um, lost my chain of thought. Did we do Archives Committee? Archives Advisory Committee, there are two positions.
I move that we reappoint uh to the Archives Advisory Committee, Mary Ellen Lannan and Joanna Sheer O'Brien, both to terms to expire March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Uh, roll call vote. Amy?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Um, okay. So just going back up to the top, uh, the next item is the Waterfield LDA or the the MOU that would become uh the LDA, the Land Development Agreement. This is for the project on the Waterfield parking lot. And we need to extend the MOU. Lisa, did you have any um, any thoughts on this, any background?
Yep, so in the packet, um, included the First Amendment to the MOU um that extended the original deadline to April ninth. So we're asking for a Second Amendment. Um, so the agreement will look the same, except it'll be called the Second Amendment, the date will change, and asking that you extend um the deadline to negotiate and execute the LDA um to April fifteenth.
Okay, so I move that we authorize uh Lisa Wong, the town manager, to sign a Second Amendment of the MOU to extend the deadline to, what was the date?
Uh, April fifteenth.
To April fifteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Uh, roll call vote. Amy?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Um, the Town Council Contract.
Um, so at a a meeting last month, the Select Board appointed Town Council um to Anderson and Krieger for a period of April first through June thirtieth. Uh, normally, we do this from an April first to uh March thirty-first timeframe. Uh, we have extended the deadline or the deadlines of the the uh Town Council appointment by a few months before. Um, so you have a letter in the packet that's dated April first. Um, it probably should be it's April first, twenty twenty. Um, yeah, that that actually should be, I'll tell Mina, it's got, it should be April first, twenty twenty-one. Um, that letter, but this is for the renewal period between July first of this year to June thirtieth of next year um to discuss the terms. Um, the councils, the Town Council period um doesn't have to overlap with the terms, but we certainly need to um discuss payment for the next three months as well as um if we want to either appoint Anderson Krieger Town Council after June thirtieth um or whether the board directs me to then go out to bid either for um another uh law firm or um, you know, going to actually hire a in-house counsel. Um, for the past, I think, four full fiscal years, um Anderson and Krieger has been charging us a flat rate of twenty-two thousand per month, per month. Um, that covers all um in-house, uh in-house work. And then um they charge us an hourly rate for any litigation or complex or externity matters as agreed upon um by the town manager. Um, they're looking to increase their rates as of July first, twenty twenty-one. Um, so there, uh, you'll see the in the letter, the the new partners and council through the first-year associate rates. Um, it's somewhere between a a six and nine percent um range for increases for each of these rates. Um, we also discussed for the next three months, they would keep their hourly rates um the same, uh but they would increase their flat rate from twenty-two thousand to twenty-five thousand dollars per month for just the next three months. Um, so I need some direction from the board. Um, the renewal period is is uh twenty-five thousand per month. So the first is, um, do we want to accept that? Do we want to counter that? And the second would be, um, what direction you'll give me for July first and beyond.
Well, Lisa, you did, you did send a um, a bit of a, an analysis and if I, if I understood, um, the sort of the bot- the very bottom line or the very global um change, that they had capped their uh annual fee at three hundred and seventy-five thousand?
Yes, their proposal for July first to June thirtieth is to cap um their fee. So this would include uh the in-house and um litigation, which they separate out right now at three hundred and seventy-five thousand. Um, given that their new rates are about a six to nine percent increase, um, you know, we could presume that, you know, comparing the existing rates to the new rates, um, we would just have to do, you know, six to nine percent less to fall within that um uh that same payment rate. However, because of the flat fee per month, um, there's been many months in which they've charged us the twenty-two thousand, but they've actually expended more. So it's not kind of a straight um reduction. I think there'd probably be a close to, more of close to twenty percent reduction in terms of hours. Um, if I'm looking at the past few years of bills, especially when we've um expended quite a bit of funds, I do think that's feasible for us to um cut the hours by twenty percent. It just will require a lot more monitoring from the town manager's office. Uh, we'll have to um probably limit the amount of contact that people could have with Town Council without going through approval. Um, and probably when we're talking about projects, limit, um, limit their hours to either mid or later-stage negotiations rather than bringing them in from the beginning. So there are ways for us to keep that, those funds down and keep it within the four hundred and fifty thousand total budget for um both Town Council and the various other consultants and uh for, um, both Town Council and the various other consultants and, uh, attorneys we use. Um, I should note, litigation has varied pretty wildly, um, in the past few years. Um, so in the analysis, I've given you the sort of the total cost of litigation. A number of the big, um, items have either, um, closed or they're closing. Um, there's sort of a spreadsheet that says litigation and the status. So you'll see that not a lot of it is ongoing. There's actually only two ongoing issues, um, a land acquisition issue and the, the Boat Club, I believe, is, um, there's an appeal. So that was fairly costly the past, past few years. We haven't really spent much recently. Um, so any, the litigation that we might be spending, uh, for next year, I would say it's probably related to any major land, uh, or building dispute. Um, and some of those disputes, um, a developer actually might make, take the lead on that and we would just be, um, sort of playing second fiddle and not spending a lot. So it's hard to predict, but, um, it is good to have the cap of three eighty, sorry, three, um, three seventy-five. Uh, and then I just looked at other potential expenses, um, uh, for, um, the Washington Swanton issue, uh, for Labor Attorney, uh, potentially some more issues around Eversource, um, some funding for Weston and Sampson related to litigation. You know, we should, we should be able to kind of fit within that, um, that four fifty. So, I guess the question is, I, I've heard multiple times that you kind of get what you pay for in terms of quality and payment. Um, if the Board wants me to go and do an RFP, we can certainly do that. Lexington did that last year. Um, they had Anderson and Krieger. They went out, um, ended up resigning Anderson and Krieger. I actually don't know if, how much their rates changed when they did that, but that's, uh, that's potentially one option.
Anyone have any thoughts? Uh, this is kind of new, newer to me than, um, some of the other things that the Board has been doing.
I mean, I'll simply just point out, I think the hourly rates are very reasonable. Um, you know, a partner charging three fifty an hour is for Boston firm like Anderson Krieger is, is very reasonable. So, you, you know, if going out to bid, I, I think, you know, in terms of rates, we're, I don't think we'll do better. Um, I would just question, you know, I am obviously new to the Board, but I assume everyone's happy with the services Anderson Krieger has provided to the town and don't have any issues with that.
We'll say, Rich, that, um, typically with these, um, municipal contracts, the hourly fees, um, you know, what, what we've seen over the years have, have been lower. I mean, I think that's where we started when we did the Town Council search, um, a few years back. We had the, um, Town Council Search Committee that we put together and looked out. So, you know, when, um, when you're looking at, um, you know, really a, a large amount of kind of bulk, you know, legal fees and then, you know, breaking it out, I think that's why we, we liked at that point, the, the flat fee. Um, it, um, some months it worked out for us, some months it worked out for Anderson Krieger, but, um, it was more predictable for us rather than just a nor, a normal, um, you know, rate. But typically, we've seen, and, and maybe the market has shifted, but what, what we saw were kind of lower flat rates, um, at, you know, uh, for, uh, for attorneys, um, you know, uh, you know, for me, for municipal contracts. So, you know, um, but I don't know. We're, yeah, I don't know what everybody's thinking, but, um, it, uh, that our, you know, our costs are pretty high. When, you know, you look at some of the unpredictable, um, high-cost items, the Highland Avenue, um, litigation, uh, the Boat Club, um, appeal process, and that litigation was one of our, um, most expensive, um, you know, legal costs, uh, certainly since I've been on the Board. I mean, it's, it's enormously expensive. So, um, those things do, do come up and, you know, we have to engage and it's hard to, hard to anticipate. So.
I mean, you certainly have the cap to protect you in that situation. So. I mean, going out to bid, I, I mean, Mike, you may know better, but municipal law like this, do the, I mean, do people usually put a cap?
Well, I guess I'd have to understand the cap, uh, a little bit better to know if, um, uh, I, I think it is more typical to have a, kind of a, a, a flat mon, monthly rate. But, um, just because, you know, a lot of the meetings, uh, you know, sometimes it'll be being at town meeting. It'll be, you know, fees attending zoning board, you know, appeal meetings. So it's, it's, there's a lot of that stuff that, you know, we use Town Council for. So, um, it's, it's not just straight litigation. So, um, you know, um, some of it's just picking up the phone on open meeting law stuff and, uh, things like that. But, um, but I don't know, I haven't seen the market. I think when we did this review a few years back, there, the, the fees were, were lower than this, but that, that may have changed. I, I, I just, I really have no idea.
Well, I would, I would just say that I was, um, on the school committee at, at a time when the school committee did go out, um, to bid and interviewed. Um, I think I was on the, the subcommittee that did the interviewing with, uh, the superintendent. And there were three or four, um, firms and, um, the contrast was pretty stark. There was a, you know, one firm that really stood out as a lot more accomplished, experienced and, and just generally higher quality than the others. And of course, they were the more costly firm. Um, and we, we went with them. And then I think the school committee has been very happy with that firm. That's an even smaller niche than, or niche market than the, um, municipal, uh, you know, Town Council, um, firms. But, um, I'm certainly, you know, very pleased and, uh, content with the, the quality of, of work that we're getting from, from Nina and, and Art. So, I'd be inclined to stay with them.
Yeah, I mean, I think everybody at A and K that I've worked with has, has, has given us a great service. I mean, I think, you know, Austin has been great as well. And, um, um, so I'm, I'm happy with them. I, as far as the, I'm, I'm not a lawyer, so, uh, I'll trust Rich on the, heh, on, on the rate being, uh, reasonable. Um, but, you know, uh, as far as the service, I've been happy with it. And we do have a lot of land use, uh, cases, uh, in town. And that's, I mean, that was what they were beforehand, right? They were our experts, our outside experts in land use before there were our Town Council. So, um, I think their specialty aligns with what we need.
Yeah, I think for now, I mean, we, they have so much history with Winchester and the, the issues that we face. And I think onboarding another firm at this point would actually increase the cost pretty significantly, I would think. Um, so, and I think that they've done great work for the, for the town. So, one question I do have is where do Mina and Austin fit in in terms of the tiers? I don't, I just don't know their, their titles. Obviously, Art's a partner, but.
I think Mina's a partner as well at this point.
Yeah, Mina's been made a partner. Um, Austin has also moved up. So he's either mid-level or senior.
Okay.
And how about Jillian? She must be.
She's a senior now.
Senior Associate.
Okay.
So I will say it's been, um, we've actually kind of seen their onboarding process by working with, uh, vigorous council as they've moved up in the firm. And, um, it's, it's, it's been great. So I know they, they, um, you know, they've been, uh, you know, giving us junior associates, um, who have basically had to work to prove themselves. And once they do, they've moved up there and they've also moved up in terms of handling complex cases without Mina or Art.
So do we want to approve through the rest of the fiscal year? Or do we want to also do March thirty first of next year and, uh, as we usually have done in the past where we renew April first? Any, any preferences?
I guess when does, uh, when does the cap apply? Is it, is it our fiscal year or is it the?
Yeah, I, I was looking for the letter that spelled that out and I, I don't have it in front of me and I'm.
The agreement as written is for the whole fiscal year.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, of twenty twenty-two. So then the cap would be for the whole fiscal year. So we would, if we adjust it to March thirty first, we would prorate that, right?
The cap, I mean, doesn't include, you know, the, you know, additional, I mean, it's, it's not really far off from what we had before, right? Um, you know, it ju, it kind of increases our exposure in the short term to fees. But, you know, we still have, you know, other, other projects that aren't included that go above that. So we, I mean, we're still budgeting four seventy-five for legal, right? I mean, that's, that's kind of our target.
Uh, four seventy-five is actually the current fiscal year's target.
Yeah.
And that's because we've, we've had quite a number of special projects this year and costs, um, associated with other, um, firms other than Anderson and Krieger. Um, they're incidental out-of-pocket expenses are fairly minimal. They might be like a couple hundred bucks a month at the most. Um, the three seventy-five will include litigation. So all of that does get lumped in there. Um, just doing quick math, if you're taking the existing twenty-two thousand dollars a month, um, let's give it a, you know, a, a ten percent bump in terms of what the hourly fees would cost. Um, that would be two ninety. That leaves, uh, you know, that leaves eighty thousand for litigation, which, um, that number actually exceeds what we spent last year. Um, we're approaching that figure this year. So it's, it's entirely feasible to be on that mark. And it, it's a cap. So, um, certainly we could get to that cap. And then it is subject to, um, appropriation. So, um, perhaps it's sort of like a, it's a cap, but it's also kind of like a flat, flat annual cap.
Right. It seem, yeah, it seems like the same, but.
Yeah.
So if this is for the fiscal year, what do we do until June? Are we on, some took a plan?
Uh, the, so what I've negotiated with them, uh, which needs your endorsement, is, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars per month for everything. And then all of the litigation above that is still the same as they're charging now. So essentially, it's, um, it's, it's just three thousand dollars more a month. So it's nine thousand additional per, per this, uh, rest of the year.
So through June?
Yeah.
Do we have a sense of, um, what kinds of cases have, you know, kind of gone beyond our regular, um, monthly agreement over the, you know, the past, you know, since, I mean, we've been with Anderson Krieger, just cuz it seems like it's, it's a lot of land use stuff. And I know that, um, that, you know, that was one of our primary reasons for hiring Anderson Krieger is that they, um, came to us very highly recommended for land use planning. And it seems that, um, we do, we certainly get that benefit. Um, and actually, I mean, one thing I, a, a lot of people don't see is just how much time, uh, Art and, uh, members of the firm spend with the zoning board of appeals, which, you know, we have no choice, right? So, um, it's, uh, we have to defend those actions and we have to be involved. And, um, so, um, and things there have, have gotten very litigious and, um, uh, really very confrontational, you know, over the past few years. So, um, you know, just, um, seems like we, it's, a, a lot of our costs are, are land use related. But, um, that doesn't, doesn't seem like, um, it, it really varies ter, terribly much from, from year to year. But I, I, I guess my, my concern was that FinCom has been, uh, you know, kind of asking us to reel in our, our legal fees. Um, and it's just, I, I don't know how much control we have over that, to be honest with you. It's not like we're, uh, just throwing money around. It's, you know, we have cases that we have to respond to and they're, are legal issues and this is what it costs. So, um, uh, may, I, I don't know if they'll, there's a sense that the Finance Committee will feel better with having that kind of more predictable number, even though it's still in that same ballpark for us.
Did Finance Committee weigh in on this, Lisa?
Yeah, I think Lisa did talk to Finance. I was in one meeting, I don't know if it's the full Finance Committee. I was in a meeting with, um, the one member who was working on the legal budget. Lisa, did you, you did talk to the full Finance Committee, right?
Um, the, I don't think the legal budget has been presented to the full committee, but I have talked to the full committee in the past few years. Um, and it was their suggestion to raise the original four hundred thousand dollar appropriation to four fifty to more, more closely match what we actually spend. Um, so this year, we're probably on target for four seventy-five. Uh, but if I look at the list of things on our plate, they are unusually and unexpectedly high. Um, there, there are additional projects we've, they're complex project we have chosen to take on. And then we kind of anticipated that those would have a cost. Um, so just like some of the, the land acquisition or land, um, use issues, um, what we'll kind of know ahead of time, say, if we're gonna take this on, um, we, we already have a sense of what that cost would be. And there are, there is some decision-making that we can take, um, about whether we want to pursue something or not. But usually, there's, um, a huge upside that the additional legal fees are justified and it's a project we want to invest in.
So, um, my opinion as far as the fiscal year, I think it makes sense that the agreement go through the fiscal year since that's the appropriation that we make. Um, so it's, it's more predictable rather than having the rate go up, even if it's only three thousand dollars a month, uh, you know, with, with, uh, what, three months to go in the fiscal year. So from a date standpoint, I don't have an issue with, uh, with extending it all the way to, uh, the end of FY twenty-two.
That sounds good.
Yep, that makes sense. Makes sense to me. You have this sort of renewal period and then you have the fiscal year.
Okay. So I move that we approve the renewal period, um, for twenty-five thousand dollars per month from the current twenty-two thousand for, uh, April first through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. And further, that we approve, um, uh, that we renewed the contract with Anderson Krieger as Town Council for fiscal year, uh, twen, twenty twenty-two, effective July first, twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, with the rates as detailed on, uh, the memo from, uh, Anderson Krieger.
Second.
So roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thanks, Lisa, for walking us through all that. Um, then we have the, um, Black Horse Tavern outdoor dining request. I guess they want an additional parking space or it was, I think they wanted more space?
We got, I, I don't know, um, if Mr. Covino is here, but we.
Oh.
We got a, um, I don't, I don't see him, um, but, uh, maybe he left. But, um, I, I think that we received a, a letter requesting the two spaces in front of, um, the Black Horse Tavern, to be, uh, you know, added on for outdoor dining. So, um, I know that there had been kind of a limit on outdoor dining spaces, uh, or taking up parking spaces, uh, this year, um, because when we did it, uh, last summer, it was a little bit of a, a free-for-all and it was a little bit disorganized. So, uh, I think working with the Chamber, we decided to kind of keep it, uh, at four spaces, um, per restaurant. So, um, I, I think Black Horse, kind of where they're situated on the corner, they were requesting, uh, from us that we give them those two spaces, uh, directly in front. Um, and I, I think that, um, their argument is, um, you know, um, based on the, the letter from Mr. Covino, uh, you know, is that they're disproportionately impacted from the MBTA project, you know, uh, relative to the other restaurants. And those spaces that are right in, directly in front of them, um, really serve their restaurant more than Thompson Street or anywhere, where else, uh, you know, um, because of the, the closures of Larway Road and everything. So, um, you know, I think that that's, that's the, that's the concern there is that, you know, we kind of, uh, applied the, the four-space rule. But, um, you know, if you, if you look at where they are and where all the construction is, um, it's, it's a lot. I, I don't know, based on the MBTA plans, um, how, how long they would be able to have, you know, outdoor dining there, uh, to be honest with you. Um, you know, we'd have to look at that. I mean, any sort of approval would be conditional. But, you know, certainly I think that that's what their, their request is. But they'll, they'll certainly be impacted more than any other restaurant or, or business in that area based on their location.
Lisa?
In my work with the chamber, obviously, we met with many of the businesses and the one complaint that we received by many of the businesses was Thompson Street and the dining on Thompson Street. You know, Salon Aesthetica, Sweet Surprise, you name the stores on Thompson Street. They, they felt that taking up, you know, four parking spaces on Thompson Street, giving the loading zone there and the, the, the idea that several commercial trucks parked there routinely really inhibited their, their consumers from coming to their stores, especially Salon Aesthetica with their elderly clients, you know, looking for parking spots. So the one complaint we did get from many of the businesses was to limit the parking on, on Thompson Street, limit the outdoor dining on Thompson Street. The other thing I'll just mention is, you know, out of all of our restaurants in terms of outdoor seating, I think Black Horse has, you know, one advantage in the fact that they can open up all their windows and, you know, circulate fresh air in like many other restaurants can't. So although I'm sympathetic to Mr. Covino's letter, you know, I think, you know, if you, if you weigh the, the harm here, I think the, the retail merchants on Thompson Street, given the spot has taken two spots already, certainly stand to suffer more if we, you know, increase outdoor dining on Thompson Street.
And I think these are actually for the spaces on Waterfield in front of the restaurant, not on Thompson. So he's looking for the two spaces directly in front of?
His own.
Of the restaurant, not on Thompson. He's not looking for Thompson. I mean, he has those, he has those spaces on Thompson already as part of the outdoor dining application that was approved. So I think he's just looking for those, those like two or three spaces that he, you know, he had before that were there. I, I think the hard part for him too is that I think now he can't open those windows because of the construction, unfortunately, you know, to, I think where at once it was a nice way to get fresh air in the restaurant and kind of open it to the street. I think it's the noise and construction over there. I mean, it's, it's pretty significant and it's, it, it goes constantly. I mean, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty tough, you know? I think, and again, as I said, I don't know what the MBTA plans there because I'm sure that they will be taking up a, a portion of that for construction at some point. So I don't, I don't know, you know, it could be he could open up there for a month and then have to remove it. I, I mean, we'd have to check with the MBTA, right, Lisa?
So I, I did check with them and they can only discuss this year. So we, they can't guarantee what's going to happen in future outdoor dining years, but the current demolition project will not need those spaces on Waterfield, so it won't impact any, anything that's being put out there that we know of that they plan on. And then in terms of the larger renovation project, even if they start sometime this fall, it's not likely that they'll do any work in that specific area. So they should be at least free and clear from those parking spaces being taken up for the remainder of this outdoor dining season, though they are going to have to face the noise from the nearby construction.
So I'll, I'll just simply state that, you know, from a chamber standpoint, in the plan that we discussed in, in meetings with officials, there was no mention of Black Horse taking Thompson's street parking. It was always their frontage of their restaurant on Waterfield Street with the parking spaces that they were dealing with. I don't know when that changed, but that's going to be a surprise to I think many in the business community to hear that.
Yeah. And, and that's what I was trying to wrap my head around. I was thinking that they had those on Waterfield and that they were trying to add some on Thompson. Now I'm hearing that they have some on Thompson already. So, um, I mean, they're just, there's less parking now with the MBTA project. So it seems counterintuitive to add.
Well, Lisa, those, those, those spots now, are they for takeout only? Are those, those two spots on Waterfield? Are they currently takeout spots?
So those signs are going to be removed soon. We have the, we have the new signs printed up for the takeout spots and the select board had voted to allow me some leeway to move those further out the downtown center. So I'll probably be picking those spots and sending you guys a sense of where they're going to be so that you can discuss them next Monday. But the, Rich is right, the original discussion with chamber members is there was a request that any of the outdoor dining spaces be on Waterfield and not Thompson. When we did the initial review, there actually was an overlap from when they were starting. So if they had set up on Waterfield, they would have actually had to remove it this past weekend. And I think the, the weekend before. But I've confirmed that there's no obstruction moving forward. So one of the other issues that arose last year is when they had both Thompson and Waterfield spots, they also used that, they blocked that corner that's needed for a turning radius for emergency vehicles. So we do want to make sure that any, you know, if they do split spots on both Thompson and Waterfield, that they don't take up that corner.
So what are they approved for right now in the outdoor dining plan?
They're approved for four spaces and the preference that the town had at the time of approval was that they would be on Thompson and not Waterfield's.
So take up four additional spots on Water, on Thompson Street? I mean, that's, I mean,
Isn't that what they have last year?
I thought they had some on, on Thompson.
Same as they have last year.
They had more, actually.
Last, last year they had four on Thompson and two on Waterfield, right?
Right.
Right.
It's not, nothing different from last year.
Except there's a giant construction project going on, right? You know, right, pretty much above where they are. I mean, I'm sympathetic and believe me, you know, Jim and I don't agree on a lot, but you know, I, I think when you, when you have, you know, a, you know, a restaurant that's right there and it's, you know, really disproportionately impacted, it's hard to apply the same rules to someone that's on the other side of, you know, the center, you know, so I, I don't know. I mean, and it's, you know, it's for one, one period, you know, of outdoor dining. I mean, it's, we can see how it goes, but my, again, my understanding was that they had Thompson as far as the application and then Waterfield was still up for grabs. So then, but I, I wasn't sure based on, I'm glad to hear that confirmed from the MBTA that they won't be needing that during this period. They won't be needing the Waterfield space.
Again, I'll just simply state that, you know, that was not what was discussed with the chamber or the businesses that were present at those meetings. So, I mean, I, I think the board needs to reconsider, you know, that many spaces on Thompson Street being taken, especially if the Waterfield spaces are available now. It's just, that's just prime parking for, for many of our retail merchants, including our new merchants on Thompson Street, the branch and Stretch Med. And I understand, you know, there's some people that need to park closely to these businesses in order to use them. And I'm sympathetic to Jim and certainly Black Horse, but I just think it's way too much prime parking to take in respect to our retailers.
I just think if you, if you only give them Waterfield, if that's what you're asking, I, I mean, I think it just, just kills your business. I mean, I just think that there's no way that outdoor dining works there long-term. I think it, it's a, if you give them, I think he had seven, I think last year it was four spaces on Thompson and then three on Waterfield. So it was a lot, lot more there to, to keep going. And, but you know, then we added the extra two spaces for the spot, which frankly kind of seemed a little bit weird. They're like mid-block, you know, especially that they have additional outdoor seating as well. It just, I don't know, it just seems strange. I guess I'd, I'd, I'd rather pull that piece off, which is right where those retailers are, uh, need the space and give him the, you know, the two in front and four on, on Thompson Street. So.
Yeah. I mean, it seems like the spots on Thompson Street in front of a Black Horse, they are really across from the, uh, from the post office. They're not, I mean, somebody's already passed the other businesses on Thompson Street and only a few more feet from where we opened up parking for two-hour parking on Avirjona. So maybe if we could have a sign that points people to the Avirjona lot, that there's free two-hour parking there as, as they approach the, the, you know, the, the tables or the barriers for Black Horse. Because if, if they're already by the, by the Black Horse, then they're not parking in front of any other retail store. And, you know, when we see other towns and other cities that have successful downtowns, it's, it's about being able to draw people to, to the area, even if parking is, is terrible. You look at, you know, Arlington or Somerville and it's having experiences like restaurants that people want to go to that they can't buy a restaurant meal on Amazon, right? So they go to the restaurant and then they walk down the street and might pop into a retailer. I, I think there's advantages that those parking spots don't only benefit the restaurant, but also benefit the, all, all the, all the businesses as a whole.
Look, can we work something out with the spot? I mean, my understanding is they didn't, their upper management asked for them, but their boots on the ground didn't really think they needed those spots. So I mean, is there something we can work out with their landlord in that alley and maybe they can increase their tables in that area and not use those spots?
Yeah, I think that's a great option. I mean, I, I didn't see a ton of people using those when they had them anyways because it, it's just very weird. I don't know how else to describe it, especially with the high barriers and you're in the middle of parking spaces on, you know, cars on each side of you. It's just a very narrow street. So it, so yeah, maybe if we, we pulled those spots out there and that would have, that would serve those retailers more. And then we bumped a couple of tables out for them, especially once the social distancing guidelines are, you know, decreased the space between them, you know? I mean, our kids are already in school with three feet between them. So I mean, you know, at a certain point, there's, you know, it's going to be more possible to put those tables together, right?
I'd also like, I mean, I'd also like to see, you know, really, you know, stick to the four spaces with Black Horse, two in the front and two on the side. You know, to minimize the damage to the, I mean, I get what everyone's saying, but to minimize the, the damage to our retailers in that area.
I think the, I think the problem is, is that two spaces is just kind of weird the way the layout is with tables. I don't think you can really, you know, proportion the amount of tables there. So you, you end up having less, having two spots in the front and two spots on the side. I mean, we, there was four spots there you know, last year on that side. I mean, on Thompson, I mean, it seemed to work out. It seemed to be an attraction, you know, pedestrian traffic and people with strollers and, you know, seems, seemed to work out.
So are we going to leave the two spots in front of the Black Horse on Waterfield open?
Well, I think the, so.
The request tonight is to close those two for outdoor dining. They already have the four on Thompson. Now the spot, do we have a request from the spot?
I don't think we do.
Because I don't think we ever approved anything for the spot.
Yeah, two spaces.
I thought we did approve two spaces for the spot.
Oh, we approved two spaces.
Yeah, previously. And they're, they're not asking for any changes.
What, what if we, uh, what if we did three spaces on Thompson and two? I mean, I don't even know if that works out. I mean, just carving up spaces, you know, in my head, I don't know if it, if it really works out, but three spaces on Thompson for Black Horse and two on Waterfield. And then we talked to the spot about pulling, pulling those other sections out and adding it on to their outdoor dining. I mean, is that a good strategy? I mean, if I were the spot, I'd rather have an expanded outdoor dining area, frankly, where, where I already, where my servers are, so they're not walking through an alley with food and drinks. I mean, it's, it's a little bit bizarre, frankly.
Yeah. I mean, I think, take it separately. Yeah. I mean, I think you're right. The spot, and, and that's what we advocated in our meetings with the town from the chamber standpoint was to, you know, see if the landlord would work with them or the town would work with them in that little alleyway to, even by the river, uh, to, to expand their, you know, they only have like two or three tables in those two parking spaces. That's all you could fit. So.
Yeah.
To do that. And then with Black Horse, I mean, I'll just simply reiterate, you know, less, you know, is better for the merchants. You know, if we're limiting it to four spaces per restaurant, if that was the decision of the town, then you know, that, that's what we feel would be appropriate. I mean, one thing that we wanted from a chamber standpoint was a ratio used. So the bigger restaurants got more spaces and the smaller ones got smaller spaces. But I understand they went in a different direction, which is fine. It's just, again, Mariana, I appreciate your point, but there are some customers that just look for the closest spot and you know, some people need them as well from an accessibility standpoint.
That's something maybe we talk about in terms of accessibility and what some of the spaces are allocated towards. I just, I, I'm, I struggle with the parking conversation because we talk about it all the time. And I think that, you know, the restaurants are, are thinking outside the box, being innovative about how they're running their businesses and they're looking for ways to increase. When they can't have people inside, they're looking for ways. So I'm in support of that. And I don't know exactly what it looks like in terms of whether, you know, increasing the spots, that they don't have those two parking spots out front for tables. But I just, I, I feel like whatever we can do to support this innovative thinking to help their businesses through this time, I think we need to do that. And we also as a board need to think outside the box about how we can make that happen. So I don't know, we, we talk about this a lot and kind of talk in circles sometimes about it. And I think, you know, they're just, you know, these, these small restaurants and I, I believe me, I'm, I'm sympathetic to the businesses as well that are not restaurants. They're all in my mind businesses, but you know, they have different struggles, but the restaurants have, in my mind, come up with some creative ways and, and are thinking outside the box and how they can serve more customers during a time where they cannot have people inside. So, I don't know. I'm sorry, I'm tired, a little frustrated, but I just think we need to make a decision on what we're doing and what's, you know, how do we, you know, what do we want it to look like? This is not forever. It's for right now. It's during a time where we're, we're just trying to support and get people downtown, like Mariano said. Restaurants are one way to do it. And then I think there is trickle down to the other businesses. And I understand there's certain businesses that are like Salon Aesthetica where they have appointments and so maybe that's something we look at, you know, if there's a, maybe there's a, during their business hours, it's a handicap spot or it's accessible spot, something like that. But I think, I don't know, I just want to, I want to be supportive of, of, of these businesses thinking outside the box and trying to really continue to survive.
Yeah, I mean, I think if the issue is accessibility, then we can look at handicap spots on Thompson Street, which there are none right now. So, you know, and further closer in to where Salon Aesthetica and T and K nails are, right? I think that might make sense if, and then a signage that says, hey, you're only one block away from a very large parking lot.
Yeah, I guess if we're going to do signage, you know, we've been talking about signage for a while now. We got to put it up. You know, it's, we've been advocating for signage for a long time now. And I think, you know, at some point, I agree, signage is great, but we gotta, there's nothing down there right now. So we have to do it.
Well, I'll make a motion anyways, because I know that we got to get moving here and Rich and I just signed on for three more years. So we've, we've got to.
Got three years, Mike, up here.
So we, we, we got to get these moving. But anyway, so, so I, I move that we kind of shift the parking that was approved as part of the outdoor dining application for the Black Horse Tavern to having three spots instead of four on Thompson Street and two spots in front of Black Horse. And we'll reach out to the spot to see if we can remove those outdoor dining spaces and somehow reconfigure there to add more into their existing outdoor dining location patio. With that.
So I guess we'll do a roll call vote? Rich?
No.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
And, you know, just to kind of. You know, add. I, I didn't, I didn't have the piece on there about evaluating the handicap access as well on, in around that area, because I know there is some spaces in front of the. Post office there, but, but nothing on Thompson to, so. I don't know. Do we, we can look into that as well?
Yeah, and, and I would ask Lisa. Can we at least get a sign? Sending people from Thompson Street, which will not be closed, people will be using, able to drive on Thompson Street all summer. Get a sign on Thompson Street somewhere, pointing people towards the Avriona lot, because it is right, right there.
What is it that we have to do in order to get signs and, you know, that kind of plan in, in place?
Well, I think we need, we, we do need more of a comprehensive plan for signage, but.
Yeah.
In connection with these, this vote on the, on the outdoor dining, at least one sign that will. Let's just do it and point people towards the Avriona lot. And I think Lisa can do that without a vote.
Yeah.
And also if we could have a sign up on Waterfield, just into the, that consumer lot, the Waterfield lot, just pointing people that, you know, two hour free parking. In that lot as well.
Great. Yeah, I know this, this parking and outdoor dining is. It's fraught. But we, we have to be flexible because it's, it's going to be. That project is going to be ongoing for a long time. So I guess that brings us to the, the warrant articles. And they're pretty much in final form. There was a memo from Mike and the, the existing draft. Lisa, was there something that was going to be resolved about?
Yep, Article twenty-nine, this is. A vote on whether to accept Chapter thirty-two, Section ninety A. So this is increasing up to. By up to fifty percent. Pay for certain town employees who. Are able to access disability. We were trying to figure out what the cost would be and I think it's about eighty-five thousand, seventy-five to eighty-five thousand for. Fiscal year twenty-two, but then it. If we're to project out the costs. You know, it's. Potentially over six hundred thousand dollars. We're in the process of doing an actuarial study and the thought was. To look at this as part of that study. Instead of looking at this. Request individuals requested by. One retiree, so it wasn't necessarily part of a larger plan that the town was looking at. So our request was to hold off on it. I did explore the option about whether. We could look at maybe a multi-year plan and do smaller increases and not go up to the full fifty percent. We can't do that, so any increase has to be done year by year. I don't have a, I mean, certainly the board can look at a smaller increase than fifty percent, but. I also think that we could hold off for another year and just take a look at it as part of the, the larger study.
That makes sense. To understand it better without, you know. You don't have to put it on this year's warrant. So does anybody have any questions or comments or anything that needs to? Change? Otherwise I'll take a motion to approve the warrant.
So I move that we approve the warrant for town, for Springtown meeting as printed.
Second.
Again.
Roll call vote, Amy?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The. We have a consent agenda with two items. One of them was the approval of the Glenn Doherty Memorial Foundation Road Race. For September twenty-sixth and I, I wanted, I neglected to pull this off the consent agenda before, but I, I think. Lisa had some, you know, I think we need to talk about it a little bit. Because I, I guess right now. You know, if we approve it. The current phase that we're in under the, the pandemic reopening plan, because you can only. Have gatherings of, I think, up to a hundred and fifty people and this would be larger. So we just need to kind of understand. Maybe we should put this off or, or how we would deal with that, you know. I know they want to get going. They want to be able to market this and, and organize it and publicize it, but. It's, it's, we're kind of in an unpredictable position. With the pandemic, so I think.
I think all, all of these. Sorry, Susan, I think all of these are kind of conditional approvals, you know, and I think they, they understand that as well, that obviously they're. Not going to put a bunch of people in a pile in the middle of the street if there's, you know, if transmission rates are increasing, so. But, so I, you know, it'd be a conditional approval, I think, for us.
Should we give them a, should we provide a date or have them give us a date at which they'll make a decision whether or not they move forward? I mean. I guess we, they could go up to the day before, but if something were to change on September twenty-fifth. I'm just wondering if they'll want, they'll want to give us a date when they're going to make a, maybe they'll, they'll pivot to virtual, a virtual race or something at some point. Because they'll need to make that decision probably pretty quick.
That, those are the races that I run all the time, just virtual races.
Mike runs in the races for the virtual.
Just think about running, yes.
So, I mean, if they need an approval to start planning, we can approve it contingent that there is no restriction by. Either the state. Or local Board of Health. Due to the pandemic, would that be?
Do you want to, yeah, do you want just to have to report back to us to give us an update by the, the end of July where they're at?
So they need to know by August first, the latest, and the Board of Health is recommending that when they come back to the Board of Health. That they discuss what their written plan, they have a written plan that describes how they're going to meet. The next standards. We don't know what the standards are going to be for Phase Four Step Two yet, but I, I, I think we'll have an idea by then.
So I guess we can wait.
Yeah.
Till June or July. I mean, we'll know a lot more just a month from now, right?
Yeah. So Lisa, Mike, we, we should just.
Well, let's, can we, let's just approve it so they can at least start thinking about it and start planning as much as they can.
A conditional approval to come back to the select board before August first.
So I move that we conditionally approve the Glenn Doherty Memorial Foundation Ninth Annual Five and Ten K Race. For Sunday, September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one, beginning at twelve noon, would start and finish line at the Jenk Center. With the conditions that the approval is conditional on coming back to the select board and presenting a written plan. To deal with the ongoing pandemic and that they are. That it's only approved if there are no restrictions from the state or the local Board of Health restricting gatherings of that sort.
Second.
A roll call vote, Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And then there's one other item.
I move that we approve Catherine Donahue as a special municipal employee for FY twenty-one, is that correct? Or should it also be twenty-two?
Lisa?
I think she's just doing, she's doing vaccine clinics, right?
It's the public, sorry, the, the flu clinics. We can always appoint her for fiscal year twenty-two if we need her for those clinics.
You could say FY twenty-one, FY twenty-two.
Yeah, FY twenty-one and FY twenty-two then.
Okay.
Roll call vote? Mike?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Unless I've skipped something. Think we have done everything on the agenda?
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, Amy?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Everybody. Good night.
Care, good night.
Night.